We're going to get started. We've seen that Supervisor Rosa is present. We have all 19 members who are present. So at this point in time, I would call on Supervisor Adam Fisher. Please come forward for the invocation. While Adam comes forward, I ask the audience, please rise. And then please stand. What do you think?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we know that you are a God of power and might. We ask for your wisdom today as we seek to serve this county with honesty and integrity and supervise those under our authority. May you give us a spirit of counsel and may it be upon us today. We pray for those in need and we always remember their plight. Amen.
Please do any pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible).
And to the Republic of America, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Supervisor Fisher, appreciate that. The quarter of action here is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. And I would entertain the motion by Supervisor Henkel. I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Fire. Is there any discussion on the minutes from the previous meeting? All in favor, please signify by aye. And opposed, and then motion by Supervisor Janice Lee. One of the things I wanted to mention really quickly, you know, we just did the pledge of allegiance. We just finished the other day where Veterans Day has just passed. And, you know, without the sacrifices made by those veterans, by those people who serve or are serving today, we don't have the opportunity to meet here. We don't have the freedoms that we enjoy in this country. And so if you could indulge me for a second, I'd like to recognize those members of our board or those sitting in the audience who either are currently serving or who have served. So if I could get the veterans to please arise, I would greatly appreciate it. And then I'd ask a round of applause for what I've done. I was considered ready to not think, and I know that's not on the agenda, but I think it's a very important part of what we do in this country. Because like I said, they ensure the freedoms that we have and to have these meetings. So moving forward, excused, we have none of those today. Supervisor Mahan, glad to see you back, sit in the chair.
Glad to be here.
Method nations, we have none today. Appointments, we have a couple. The South Central Library Board, the Francis Churchney, and the Health and Human Services Committee, Dr. Eric Quivers to fill the unexpired term of the physician position. And I again entertain a motion by Supervisor Rosa, a second by Supervisor Hamilton. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of those appointments, please signify by aye. And opposed, and then carries unanimously. Comments from the public? Do we have any public comment today? Any public comments at this meeting? Any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we go to acknowledgements and recognitions. And this one is like pulling teeth to get them to even allow us to mention this. But once again, our finance director, Mike Martin, was awarded a certificate and awarded financial reporting achievement for the CAFER for 2016 from the GFOA. And there's a plaque that goes with that and a presentation that only happens. But Mike, again, I'm going to mention your career is winding down with the county here real quickly. Got about a month left with us, maybe a little bit more than that. Again, I want to congratulate you on that award for your attention to detail and for the work you've done for the county for many, many years. So thank you so much. Probably the only person I have to beg to be able to announce an award, but anyway, thanks, Mike. This will get us into the regular packet. Today, we have no special order of business. Obviously, we have the budget front of us. There's a lot of supporting documentation in the packets that you had today. So some of this will get to a resolution. And there might be 20, 30, 40 pages that actually follow that. So we'll try to acknowledge as we go. There were several referrals, six of them for the month of November, went to the appropriate people and or committees. As we get into the packet, page seven, first thing in the packet, the Thursday, October 26th meeting of the Ad-Hoc Property Committee. Those pages seven and eight. We have comments from the county clerk for November on nine. We had a very successful Business After Hours event that we held at the Riverblock Building. I attended a number of the Business After Hours events throughout the community, and this one was exceptionally well-attended and the job was well-done. I want to thank especially Cindy Seacrest and Jason Gruber, who really spearheaded that operation and put it all together, but a really good event. I want to thank those supervisors for attending. Maintenance, monthly letter of comments on page 11. Safety and Risk Management on 12. The Treasurers Report on 13. Human Resources Department, their monthly letter of comments on 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. So 14 through 18. And then that brings me to the first resolution in the packet. National Standards for Wood County Tax Law, this coming year. So Cindy.
This will be Resolution 17-11-1 to establish Wood County's tax levy for 2017, collectible in 2018. Fiscal note, $25,645,546.
Okay, you've read the reading of the resolution. I have a motion by Henkel and a second by Bri. Discussion on the resolution. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Supervisor Clendeney, we'll get somebody over there having trouble with that system again. Second resolution in your packet also brought forth by the Executive Committee. And I ask the clerk to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution 17-11-2 to approve year 2018 budget. Fiscal note, uses and sources totaling $109,822,712.
And a motion by Hamilton, a second by Zerflu. Any discussion on this resolution? Supervisor Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move at this time to amend the 2018 budget that is attached to this resolution so as to eliminate the position of recruiter in the HR department effective January 1st, 2018. The change to the budget would be removing $79,677 from account number 51435 and placing it into contingency account number 51590. Net effect of this change would be the contingency account would go from $450,000 to $529,677. Human Services budget will go from $552,681 to $473,004, the $79,677 being the annual cost of the recruiter position.
I had an amendment offered on this resolution by Supervisor Mahan. Is there a second to that? Is there a second? Supervisor Fisher, there is a second. Discussion? Discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Supervisor Wain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mahan had brought this subject up to me several months ago, and we discussed it. And I didn't do it at that time. There is, I believe you received a memorandum from the HR department concerning this position and the need for this position. During the public hearing portion of the Executive Committee meeting today, Mr. Mahan read some statistics on it. And what I found interesting about those statistics, well, that was total overtime for the total county. We did not have a breakdown for how many hours of overtime were from vacancies as opposed to what normal overtime you might get, therefore, overtime like from the Sheriff's Department and other departments might be included in there. I have worked with the recruiter position twice in the past year and found that recruiter has provided the county with a very valuable service in basically organizing the interviews for vacant positions and allowing us to move very swiftly through the process and sort out the candidates and find the ones that best suit the county. They've done this twice in the past year that I've worked with them. I've been very happy about that. The other thing is that the, basically, the handout we got from the HR department shows that the length of time of vacancies being held open in the county have decreased significantly with the assistance of this position. And I think that's something that we need to hold onto, that we need to keep on to. I am going to vote against this amendment and vote to keep that position open. Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion on the amendment? Supervisor Clendeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be voting for the amendment. Yeah, I think it's a good idea, as I stated in the Executive Committee's public hearing session, is the fact that that was the one increase. And I opposed the recruiter. And if I remember right, it was by one vote, it did pass. And then when it became a vacant position, the Executive Committee, you know, voted to fill that position in opposition of them doing that. I think it's a step in the right direction. I think being in HR, they should know when their department has more employees than they need, and I certainly am voting for this. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Supervisor Rosa, then Supervisor Henkel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't be voting against this amendment, and I'm not totally convinced that the recruiter position is what we need, but I think that we need to talk about it more. I'd like to get more input about, you know, does the person that's in this position do other things in the department or is that the only thing? So I'm not saying that I think this position needs to totally be retained, but I just think that this may be the wrong way to go about it without further discussion and research into exactly what all this entails. Thank you.
Supervisor Henkel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I oppose this amendment. I have seen great value in the recruiter position. It very much facilitates refilling positions and very much helps each department head as they are going through this. Recruiting new positions tends to be a very time-consuming thing without a recruiter helping. And any one of these department heads are in a position where they're short a person during that time, plus having to deal with the recruitment and filling that position. And it gets to be a very big burden on our department heads. I'd see value in this position.
Further discussion on the amendment? Further discussion on the amendment? Supervisor Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, in recognizing Executive Chair's reference to the overtime breakdown, I reviewed the recording of the November 12th, 2014 meeting when this position was proposed to the County Board to make sure it was come from a perspective of factual facts on this issue today. And what our HR director at the time promised us was that there would be, and regarding the specific overtime that was caused by job vacancies, a reduction of $450,000 in overtime. That, we didn't come nowhere near that. And that was basically the sole premise of that, for those of you who remember, that was basically the sole premise of that discussion. That was a very close vote. And if you recall, I questioned her pointedly. And there's a direct quote here from the recording that she gave me after I questioned her on the validity of this position, and it is this, "If I can't prove to you that this results in cost savings, I won't keep the position in 2016." It's that simple. It has not come true.
Further discussion? Further discussion? All right, we're voting on the amendment. On the amendment. All right, please vote. So the amendment passes 11-8. The amendment passes 11-8. That takes us back to the original resolution as amended. The original resolution as amended. Is there further, or is there any discussion? Additional discussion on the resolution as amended? Any discussion? Let Cindy get to, we get to voting up here on the board here. Okay, then please vote on the resolution as amended.
So this is on the budget.
And that passed 15-4. 15-4. All right, back to your packet, pages 21 through 44. 21 to 44. You just saw that before you a minute ago, as we have the budget here and it's all the supporting documentation that went with those resolutions. So if you want to go to page 45, I don't think everybody has any additional questions on those. Go to page 45, and it brings us to third resolution, I believe, brought forth by the Executive Committee in regard to tax deed eligible property.
This will be Resolution 17-11-3, Tax Deed Eligible Property. Authorize the tax deed in a property in compliance with Section 75.14 Wisconsin statutes. Fiscal note, taxes from 2010 through 2016 of $13,506.2 plus delinquent utilities, special assessments, publication fees, and tax deed in expense for a total of $47,303.3.
A motion by, let me try that again. Hands up? By Clendeney, a second by Fire. I think he got his hand up second. Okay. Any discussion on this? Any discussion on this resolution? All right, seeing none, please vote. There's a lot of hands, we're in a hurry. Resolution passed unanimously. Page 47 in your packet, another resolution from the Executive Committee out of the Treasurers Office. And I ask the clerk to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution 17-11-4, Authorize the Sale of Tax Deed Property Back to Former Owner. Fiscal note, paid amount of $3,260.
Okay, you've seen the reading, or you've heard the reading of the resolution. You've seen it in front of you. A motion by Hamilton, second by Fisher. Any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? That resolution also passed unanimously. If you go to page 48 in your packet, another resolution out of the Executive Committee, again, dealing with the sale of tax-deeded property.
This will be Resolution 17-11-5, To Accept Offer of Sale of Tax-Deeded Property. Fiscal note, offered amount of $38,702 minus real estate taxes, publication fees, tax deed fees, special charges, and delinquent utilities for a total gain of $18,979.87.
Motion by Clendeney, second by Bri. Discussion? Any discussion on the resolution? Resolution passed unanimously. Page 15 in your packet, Health and Human Services Committee, October 26th, pages 50, 51, and 52. The Human Services Department report, beginning on Director Ruins, beginning on page 53, running through page 57. The Veteran Service Officers Report on 58 and 59. Health Department's monthly letter of comments on 61, 2, and 3, so 60 through 63. Minutes of the Public Safety Committee, October 9th, beginning on page 64 through 67. 64 through 67. Supervisor Laitman.
Just want to make a statement for the record here. I commend the Public Safety Committee on the thought of a mobile dispatch center. Maybe in future budgets, that might be something we should look at. We've seen so many instances this summer and fall, of storms across the United States, and then all the violence that we've seen. Mobile dispatch centers seems like a great idea to me.
Anybody else on the minutes from the Public Safety Committee? 64 through 67. Page 68, begins the minutes of the SEAN Committee on Wednesday, November 1st, and that's 68, 69, 70, and 71. Golden Sands Resource Conservation Development Council, beginning on Personnel, Finance Committee, the MEED minutes, and additional other minutes from the entire committee and, or the entire board of different committees there within. Pages 72 through 80. 72 through 80. Any questions on Golden Sands? All right, then we come to the monthly letter of comments from the Land and Water Conservation Department. It's kind of backwards. They're in here in the opposite direction than they normally are. They're on 81 through 85. The one on 85 would normally be the first one. But any questions on land conservation? Page 86, there's a face-to-face with the legislators, legislators and update from Supervisor Henkel. Pages 87 through 89, update from W. Extension and their monthly letter of comments. There's a whole bunch of them here. Beginning on page 90, some monthly letter of comments from our Planning and Zoning Director, beginning with Jason Gruber's. It runs through page 136. I'm sure you had it in your series, but it's 90 to 136, and it was the justification, kind of the annual report of what all of the economic developments in this county do. So does anybody have any questions on anywhere in the 90 to 136 page range? And I'll give you a minute to look over the notes, but they're all basically the same thing in regard to all of those different organizations. Okay. Takes me to page 137 in the packet, demands minutes of the joint meeting between the Judicial Legislature, Can Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee. They're meeting on October 17th on 137. And page 138 is a resolution in the packet from the Judicial and Legislative Committee.
This will be Resolution 17-11-6, To Commence the Final Phase of Recodifying the Wood County Code of Ordinances. Fiscal note, none. If this resolution is approved, then next month, an ordinance recodifying the Wood County Code of Ordinances would be presented to the Board. And if that is approved, there would be a publication fee for that document. But it would save the company the cost of publishing all of the revisions being made to the Code of Ordinances.
Supervisor Hamilton, second by Supervisor Clendeney. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Again, that resolution passed unanimously. Page 139 in your packet, begins the minutes of the Health Committee, Highway Infrastructure Recreation, beginning on 139 and running through 142. 139 to 142. The various reports from within those departments, beginning on 143 through 146, beginning with Department of Construction Supervisors' report, 143 to 146. Supervisor Ashford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I missed a minute of the Highway Department, and I just have a call from a few of my people at home, and they've been driving on their roads as we had reconstructed our money. And they said, what kind of outstanding job was done? They said it just, it just superior job done to do those. So, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ashford. All right, any other questions on the, beginning with Department of Construction Supervisors' report, those monthly updates, pages 143 through 146? Any of those? All right, that brings me to a resolution on page 147.
This will be Resolution 17-11-7, To Authorize the Wood County Clerk to Execute a Quit Claim Deed in Transferring Parks and Forestry Property, the old Dexter Maintenance Shop and Property, to the bidder approved by the Highway Infrastructure and Recreation Committee on November 2nd, 2017. Fiscal note, the county will receive $41,550 for sale of the property. Proceeds will be placed into the Parks and Forestry Non-Lapsing Capital Projects Account.
I have a motion by Supervisor LaFontaine, a second by Supervisor Ho坎. Any discussion on this resolution? Supervisor Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I am not opposed to this as a sale. I do question the allocation of the funds, where they're going into CIP, a non-lapsing fund account for specifically parks and forestry. This building, I assume, was built back in the day with tax levy dollars. It's county property and not parks property. And I think that I would like to make a motion here so that those funds go back to the general fund. I think we send a mixed message to our department heads when we have certain department heads returning levy. I don't know all the numbers, but for the committee that I'm on, the Health and Human Services, the Health Department has returned well over $600,000 in the last six or seven years. That's really being a team player. When those funds go to the general account, in my opinion, that gets other projects done to the county through the CIP and helps balance the budget. So that is my motion that we approve this with the amendment that the funds go back to the general fund, not to the Parks and Forestry's non-lapsing fund.
Can I just ask, just a quick, let me get a second, if I have a second. I have a second, Supervisor Mahan, and then I want to go to our Court of Counsel, Kasimov. Do we have a policy on that already, Peter, or is that a, that would be contradictory to? And then how do we, that's handled? You thought you were going to get away on the state that night?
Yes. So the policy that we have, I think it's Rule 43, and it deals with the sale of personal property as opposed to real property. So you don't have a policy that covers this, that I recall. And even if you did have a policy that covered this, I believe, because that's created by resolution, you can still take actions and deviate from that policy or those policies.
Okay, thank you. So I have an appropriate motion to amend this, and basically the amendment takes the money from the Department of Forests, Non-Lapsing Capital Projects, and the general fund. That is the amendment. That is on, discussion on the amendment? Discussion on the amendment? Supervisor Clendeney.
I really don't have discussion, but I wish you're like somebody from the Highway Committee that, you know, voted for this to tell us, or ask us why Supervisor Kramer's idea is a good one or a bad one.
Do I have anybody from the Perk Committee who wants to comment on the resolution? Supervisor Bri, and then Supervisor Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been highway property for quite some time. We've done some other building projects. I think the way I look at it anyways to offset the cost of some of those other projects.
Supervisor Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have an agree with Supervisor Kramer. I think this will go back to the general fund. I said that last month that we voted on a resolution. And it goes back to the past when this was paid for by tax levy. So to me, that's where it should be.
Supervisor Wain.
Thank you. It wasn't too long ago, we passed a resolution that...
Wasn't too long ago, we passed a resolution that allows the Recreation and Forestry Department to keep anything in excess of over what's budgeted in timber sales and other revenues. I think we're giving, I think this, I'm going to go with this amendment because I think we're giving them special treatment that other departments don't get. And Mr. Castle is actually correct, though we have addressed all our attention in excess funds to private property, to private property, personal property, as opposed to real property. So we really don't have a policy on this, and I really don't like being picked off one by one like this. So I think we should be talking about a policy on this in 2018. Further discussion on the amendment? Back to Supervisor Clendell.
Okay, if that helps out, Supervisor. You know, I think right at the issue right here is the sale of property. Could we just have that eliminated from that resolution about where the money goes, and the Highway Committee come back with a different resolution? But I think what's important here is the pending sale, and they just discussed that this morning, that it's about time we settled this issue and got to the sale. Can they just sell the property without determining where the money should go?
Do whatever you want, but we have a amendment, we have a resolution on the floor, we have an amendment that has been authorized, that has been seconded. We are still on discussion on the amendment, which returns the money to the general fund as opposed directly to the Park and Forestry Non-Lapsing Capital Projects account. So further discussion on that? Further discussion?
I have a question.
Supervisor Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can somebody tell me what the amount of money was that was taken out of this non-lapsing capital projects account to pay for this property? Anybody know how much we paid for this property all those years ago?
It's been there forever. I know it.
I can't imagine we bought it for $41,500.
All right, so here we are, we're at the point, a yes vote is to amend, to return, a no vote is to allow it to remain in the, not in the Park and Forestry Non-Lapsing Capital Projects account. So I ask you to please go to the board then. Supervisor Fire, apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Who pays for the bid, to do the advertising for the bids? Does the, somebody absorb that cost? Ads don't come cheap, so there's got to be some money expended there. So, you know, if you're going to nitpick and decide what you're going to do, then somebody should get paid for those ads.
Who, the Parks Department paid for the ad? You paid for the ad, Jim? The Parks Department paid for the ad. Further discussion? Okay, Supervisor Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm under, I have a question, or understanding that there was a new maintenance building built, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that was through CIP taxpayer dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we've taken CIP taxpayer dollars and built a new facility for Parks and the maintenance building. Now we're selling the old one, and they want the money from that to go in a special account. That really, in a nutshell, is a precedent we're setting, is that they've used the taxpayer dollars to build the new building, now they want to take the money and put it back in their own personal fund, basically, in a way, the savings account in a non-lapsing fund. I think the money, the new building was built with taxpayer levy dollars, the money should come back to the general fund so that the county board can allocate it as they say. I don't know what the next project is next year. I don't know which department, which committee is going to need the money. So I think it should come back, and then we can reallocate it, much like other departments do, they return levy, it goes into the general fund, we make the best decision, because we don't know what big project's going to happen next year. That's my point. Thank you.
Okay, we're still on the amendment. Supervisor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's my understanding that this is all our money. I mean, we can touch this money whenever we want. It doesn't matter if it's in a non-lapsing account. If the county needed it, would we not be able to pull it out to do something with it? Or is that untouchable money, then, for any other purpose?
Peter?
I guess without an extra step, anyway. Yes, by resolution, you can get the money out of the, whatever account you put it in. Obviously, the difference is that if it's in a, if it's in a non-lapsing fund under my control, I might have some plans and develop those, and there are some expectations that arise with regards to them, as opposed to if they're in some other fund that is just more of a countywide fund, then those plans don't have the same level of expectation. But your question is, yes, that still takes county board action in some fashion to access it.
One more time, Supervisor Kramer. Anybody else? One more time, before I go back to Supervisor Kramer. Supervisor Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want this to be viewed as anti-parks. I'm pro-parks, but I think that Supervisor Wagner had a very good point, that with our policy currently, we need to send very consistent, clear messages to our department heads, and this muddies the water. And I really am very much in favor of clear, consistent policy, clear, consistent precedent. I think this sets the wrong precedent as moving forward.
Okay, we're right now with the amendment. Are you, any further comment, discussion on the amendment? Okay, so just so to clarify this for you, a yes vote amends this to return it to the general fund, a no vote would allow it to remain in the non-lapsing account. I'd ask you to please go to the board then. That resolution passed 12-7. 12-7. All right, now we go back to the original resolution as amended, which is the settlement of the property for the $41,550, with the money going to the general fund. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Any discussion? All right, back to where we started. Please vote. And that resolution passed 18-1. 18-1. Asian Disability Resource Center minutes, their Finance Committee minutes of September 14th on 148. Their Board of Meeting Minutes of same date on 149 and 150. Minutes of the McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees on 151 and 152. Minutes from their Board of Trustees from October 18th on 153 and 4. Minutes of the South Central Library System, 155, 6, and 7. And that takes me to the end of the packet. Supervisor Mahad.
Thank you once and for all, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I would just like to take a moment here to pass on my thanks to everyone who flowers, cards, I've got stacked the cards at home, I can't believe, texts, phone calls, et cetera. Your concern, concern from many of the people in this room was very touching, very appreciated, and I would just like to pass on my thanks again for your thoughts and prayers in my latest travails. It's been a hell of a year. Thank you.
All right, as we're winding this down, our next meeting is set for December 19th. The other thing is, we go through this weekend, our annual gun gear season opens this weekend. I want everybody to be real safe out there. Relay that message to everyone in the packs, our sheriff's department, our emergency response, and everybody else. So I'd like you to be really safe. Supervisor Wagner. Yeah, before we leave, before all the department heads leave, I wanted to thank the department heads, the tremendous work they did in making together the budget this year, and helping bring it in under the parameters. I'm very thankful for all of your help, and you did a good job. Thank you very much. Okay. Supervisor Lafontaine's making a motion to adjourn, I assume, and a second by Supervisor Hamilton. All in favor, please signify by eight. Thank you, we stand adjourned.